Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure if you heard the opening with the school board, but the Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support candidates or political parties. We do, however, study the issues of our day and, following consensus, take positions on issues. My name is Margaret Swick. We thank you for being here tonight and for participating in our forum. We're going to begin with an opening statement from each candidate. We will move to questions, and each candidate will receive the same question and answer it. And then we will have a final closing one-minute statement from each candidate. So, our opening will begin with Mr. Bassett. One minute, please, your opening statement.
Good evening. I'm Brian Bassett, currently a big city council member, vice mayor, big city council. I've spent most of my life in the city of Biggs. I grew up in Biggs in a time when it was kind of a magical place. It was a great childhood, a great place to raise my kids. When I decided to run for city council, I was kind of getting a little bit discouraged with the the attitude and the way our city was becoming, and so I wanted just to have the chance to get on the city council and maybe try and bring back a little bit of the unity in the community. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
Good evening. My name is Bo Shepherd. I'm currently the mayor of the city of Biggs. I'm running for city council again because of the many challenges that we face, not only as a community, but even as a county, a state, and country. Many of the problems or the challenges that I think that we face have to do with a lot of it stem from the pandemic, but other challenges can public safety, state and federal regulations toward our utility. So these are some of the reasons that I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Buck?
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. My name is Mike Buck. I'm a current appointed city council member. I was appointed about six months ago, so for the past six months, I've been learning the ropes, and I find this very interesting. And the best way to stay involved in your community is to attend these meetings or become a city councilmate member to see what's going on in your town. And I'm a Biggs resident since about 1988. The kids went to school here, graduated here. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Wilks? Your opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name's Amida Wilks. I've lived in Biggs for over thirty years. Prior to that, I was in Gridley. I work at Yuba College for over thirty-three years. I'm an administrative assistant for the dean of student success and institutional effectiveness. My role there is to ensure that our college is accredited. I work with budgets and do a lot of other work, and I feel that my skill there will transfer over and assist the city of Biggs and the residents in improving any of the challenges this small town has. I know Yuba College has small challenges because they're a smaller community college. Thank you.
Mr. Knuckles?
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. Like Mr. Buck, I'm an appointed council member. I was appointed in February of 2021. I was it was an open position, and there were some things going on in the city that I didn't like at the time, so I decided if I had complaints, then I should probably step up and get onto the council and solve some of them. I would be interested after a year and a half of running, I'm interested in serving a full term. Thank you.
Thank you. Our number-one question, which each candidate will answer, goes to Mr. Shepherd. It is, what are your goals regarding revitalizing or improving downtown Biggs?
That's something of a limited question because we don't own any of the property downtown Biggs, but for a number of years, we've required buildings that were dilapidated to be torn down. We're still working on that. We have a business revitalization plan that's dated, but long story short, is, you know, some of the buildings have to come down and be rebuilt in order for there to be office space and such, so but we are working to continue to try and improve it and make it safe. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Buck?
Yeah, to continue on with what Bo was saying, everybody's pretty much agreeing with what the city owns and doesn't own, but we have a street problem. Our streets need to be really need to be addressed in this town. Unfortunately, a lot of them have more problems than flat surfaces. And that's a huge concern for everybody that lives here, and it's one of our main priorities, at least my main priority.
Ms. Wilks?
Could you repeat the question?
What are your goals regarding revitalizing downtown Biggs?
Um, I believe we need to look at the bring up the revitalization plan up again and look at that. I believe there's a challenge with funding, perhaps looking at some grants that could assist with the revitalization of downtown. And so also getting community input as a part of that. But there is a lot of challenges with getting grants and putting that into play. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Knuckles?
As far as my personal thoughts on the downtown is, I feel we need to find a way to encourage business to come back into the downtown area, to have the stores and stuff that we had in the past that we never have anymore, just to see those come back into the community, and I believe it would help the community as a whole if we did have those businesses back again. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
To kind of piggyback off of what Bo and Mike both said, you know, part of our problem is, is we have business owners or owners that own the buildings that are not motivated to do anything with them, and they're letting them fall apart. And our whole south side of downtown B Street is pretty much just dilapidated buildings, except for our hotel, which has been beautifully restored by Marcy Shad. I feel like, as a council, we need to start putting pressure on some of these people to to do something with their buildings. We probably need to give some incentive to the current business owners to maybe clean up their their businesses. You know, a lot of the buildings on the north side are also in need of repair or paint jobs or weeds that need to be cleaned up, just to make our downtown look more attractive to people coming in here.
Thank you. And our next question, what are the strengths and weaknesses associated with Biggs relying heavily on independent contractors such as city attorneys, city engineering, city planning, or accounting? And we'll start with Mr. Buck.
Well, my short experience is dealing with a city engineer, a city planner, and even the administrator is that they all seem to be very knowledgeable. Everything is well thought out. Everything is delivered to the council in an easy-to-read format. They explain some terms that we may not hear every day in our everyday lives, and generally give us the pros and cons of both sides so we can make a good decision for our community. That's the best way I could put it.
Ms. Wilks?
The pros and cons, of course, if you have a part-time city planner or city engineer, it's when you have a project, sometimes you have to go within those guidelines to run information by them. So that's a big challenge, and how do you get over that challenge? I believe the current city council members are probably looking at that and seeing how, you know, they can overcome that. Again, it has to do with funding. If you have an $8.5 million, excuse me, $8.5 million budget and annually, you know, it has to go a long way. And sometimes the salary takes about ninety percent of the budget, so it's a challenge.
Thank you. Mr. Knuckles?
The challenge is, like Amida has said, you don't have them on all the time. The pros to it is, we're not paying for somebody full-time to be here at the administrator's office all the time or at the council's office. We don't need them. We're only paying for them when we do need them. And they do express everything very clearly, very easy to understand, and make everything to make easy decisions for the council. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
You're asking the question, ma'am, of a city that has very limited resources financially to hire full-time consultants. The consultants that we have have pulled off some major projects in this town, like our wastewater treatment plant and our sewer projects. Biggs is in pretty good shape financially right now, mainly because us as a council, we do listen to our consultants, and they're doing a pretty good job for us. I don't see any cons right now of having our part-time consultants. They do a great job for the city of Biggs.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
So the pros of having contract labor, as Ben mentioned, is that they're only here when we need them. We don't have a problem with there being a delay in work being done because of that limited time spent. We also don't have the taxes that go along with that, the retirement and so forth. But historically, Biggs has always had contractors in those positions that you mentioned. So, yeah, it's it's just what's feasible for the city. And like I say, we do have excellent contractors. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question, what is the relationship of Biggs with the Butte County Sheriff's Department? What areas would you like to improve? And the first question goes to, this question first goes to Ms. Wilks.
Thank you. What areas do we want to improve? So personally, I've seen an improvement with the visibility of Butte County sheriffs. And I see also the response time. Whenever there's an issue, they're here very quickly. They're also here a couple of days a week. So I don't see any issues with the current safety system that we have now.
Okay. Mr. Knuckles?
I feel that Butte County Sheriff's Department is actually doing a very good job for the city of Biggs right now. They're quite visible in the community. You see them around town quite often. Response time's very good, so I don't see where there's a problem at this point where we need any major changes. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
Like Chuck said, up to this point, Butte County sheriffs have been fantastic. I was on the council when we hired them to be our law enforcement. They've been able to put officers in our community on a regular basis. Like we said, there's a big presence. They're here at all our community events, you know, our Fourth of July shows and our National Nights Out. Butte County is a big county, but for the last couple of years, we've had Sheriff Honi here personally at our city events, socializing with the residents, getting to know the town. And that goes a long way when the town knows the law enforcement and has a little bit of sense of trust in them because of that.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What is the relationship of Biggs with the Butte County Sheriff's Department? What areas, if any, would you like to improve?
So probably getting, you know, simply getting people to report things that happen. That is the best tool. They're very responsive. You know, but they need to know when things happen. If either one of us have a have a problem or the community, they're very approachable. So I really don't see any problems that we're having with their service. It's just really getting people to report things that happen that are relative to them. And then it benefits that they also know what goes on outside our city limits. So that's, to me, is a better plus. Thank you.
Mr. Buck?
Yeah, so far, I think they've been absolutely outstanding personally. I say it every morning, we drop the grandkids off at school. There's a couple of cars every other block or so, keeping an eye on the traffic and the students. And also they attend all our council meeting, council meetings. Once a month, they give us a rundown of what's been going on in the city. If there's anything to look out for, I wouldn't change a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will go to first, Mr. Knuckles. What attributes are you looking for in your next city administrator? How would you describe the leadership skills you are seeking for Biggs?
I mean, personally, I would like to just take our intern administrator and just keep him, but he's not willing to do that. Basically, a self-starter, someone who will run the city, but brings everything to the council and presents it in a way that we can make informed decisions on what needs to happen in the city. Other than that, I mean, just somebody that has management skills and personal skills, stuff like that. That's what we're looking for, what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
We had a unique situation with Mark Hornson, our city administrator. You know, Mark was very knowledgeable in both finances, but also in the legality of everything, what you could and you couldn't do. He kept all of us city members, our city council members, on a straight and narrow path. But Mark was also an everyday person, had a lot of common sense, and he was trustable. And so those are the things that are important to me, is somebody that is knowledgeable of the laws that it takes in governing a city, is knowledgeable in the finances, but that is also a real person, and you can come and talk to him when you have an issue, and he can give you real sound advice, and that you can trust him.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
So obviously, looking for the right city administrator is challenging Biggs. City administrator, not only where's the administrator at, but finance director, utility director, code enforcement, oversight, and, you know, things that come up through the day. So somebody that's, if they don't have those skills, then they have to be able to learn on the run. Our interim administrator has been writing detailed weekly reports to have the person get up to speed. So they have a bio of everything that's going on, so I think that that, you know, depending on when we get to that point of choosing someone, that'll help them get started. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Buck?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's not much left to say. Everybody's pretty much said it. Mark and Dennis have both been excellent in what they do, and led us down the path of not only teaching, but giving us great advice and research, giving us, like myself, running the Brown Act and all those things you can and cannot do as a council member. There's training that you get, and it's invaluable to have somebody that will spend some time with you to make you a worthy city councilman and not do something that you shouldn't be doing and get yourself in trouble or somebody else. So it's a very important position, and so far, we've had two really good ones in the short six months. And I can just say, I hope we get a third that's just as qualified.
Ms. Wilks?
Thank you. I think it's important for a city administrator to have some experience with budget, with legalities, of course, in running a small city. But also that can interpret that to the to the city council members and keep us abreast of any and all information that we need in order to make important decisions for the city of Biggs and the residents here in Biggs. And so I think those are some of the qualities. It is a challenging position when you have to wear multiple hats and be a lot of places at one time. But, yeah, and so I think those skills are very important.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question will go first to Mr. Bassett. Biggs contracts with Gridley for maintenance of power utilities. Who will be responsible for the pending new above-ground water storage? Describe how the tank and pumping station will be operated by, and by whom? And Mr. Bassett, please.
In all honesty, ma'am, I have no idea. I really don't. I imagine that our Public Works, Mr. Pratt and the boys are going to work closely with Gridley's Electric, which they always do, but I don't anticipate very much outside help with that. We have a very capable Public Works in Biggs. They're knowledgeable. They take care of our wastewater treatment plant. If they can do that, they can definitely take care of our our water, our new water storage facility as well.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd?
Could you repeat that question again?
Yes. Um, Biggs contracts with Gridley for maintenance of power utilities. Who will be responsible for the pending new above-ground water storage? Describe how the tank and pumping station will be operated and by whom?
So Biggs owns the water, so we'll definitely be operating that. And Gridley, we have a contact for the electric, and that's where that begins and ends. We don't, they don't have anything to do with our water. Storage tank that we plan to build once we get the funding for it. So, yeah, we would definitely operate. Yeah, we just contract with Gridley to maintain our electric substation and power lines when there's a problem.
Mr. Buck?
No, I answered the question. We just have an electrical contract with Gridley, and I'm sure our Public Works will be taking care of our above-ground water system, as well as the wells and sewer plant.
Okay, Ms. Wilks?
Thank you for that question. And I'm not sure how to answer this question. Above-ground water storage, I believe there's going to have to be some collaboration with both cities in order to make this situation work. I honestly couldn't tell you any more than that. I would need to do a little bit more research on this question. Thank you.
Mr. Knuckles?
Bo and Brian have pretty much explained the situation there. It's going to be a city-owned project, so the city would maintain it. Anything that would be contracted as far as city electric would be, if we needed electrical, brought in for it. That's the only thing I can see. The city of Gridley would be brought in for it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, our next question, and it will go first to Mr. Shepherd. What are the biggest challenges facing Biggs today? What strengths do you bring that will influence Biggs for the better?
So the challenge that Biggs faces today, some of them have been mentioned, you know, roads. We own our own utility. Electric rates have been extremely volatile. California's pushed to go green. You know, that is a big challenge for Biggs. So, you know, that's probably the one single biggest thing is is keeping up with our utilities. And in particular, the electric, because the state is mandating that, you know, we keep up with their goals. What I bring to it is probably like everybody sitting at this table, we have a long history of Biggs. And my, I grew up, my stepdad was on city council most of my life, and you know, we raised kids here and been involved in the community, so that's what I bring to it, plus twelve years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buck?
I would echo a few of those sentiments, and I would add that keeping our school and our elementary schools, we're keeping those numbers up. Some of the classes, we have about forty kids per student, you know, and that can get a little a little scary. You get graduation classes of forty, forty-five kids. I'd like to see the town grow a little bit, and I want to, you know, see it busting from highway to east grid or back Biggs Road or anything crazy like that, but, you know, some some new businesses downtown, a couple, like you said, some hardware shops and maybe a restaurant. Gas station, something, something new and shiny. And what I would bring to the to the council would be, hopefully, just a level-headed view. Not really caring whose idea it is. It's a good idea. Let's try to proceed with it. Let's see if we can fund it. Let's see if we can pull it off. If it's good for the community and to keep, you know, the Biggs pride thing going. Everybody's proud of their high school and their elementary school. And thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Ms. Wilks? Wilks?
Thank you. There's about fourteen miles of road here in Biggs, and it is, there's, there's a lot of potholes. It's in disrepair. There, that's one of the issues, and also probably, again, the downtown revitalization. And those kind of things, I believe, we have been working on the sewer, so I know that is in process. I've been seeing a lot of improvements. But I believe that one of the challenges is what we're going to need is is funding in order to make those repairs. And where do we get the funding? And that's something that we need to research. What I bring to the table, what I can do is use my skills as an administrative assistant to seek funds, to not, all grants, small grants for small cities are, might not fit for Biggs, and some might. There's also the challenge of, once you get that money, how do you, you don't have the staff.
Thank you, Ms. Wilks.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Mr. Knuckles?
The biggest challenges for Biggs right now would be infrastructure, really, water system, sewer system. The roads definitely need repair. As far as what I bring to the table is, I'm a longtime community resident. I have kids in the school. I'm a working-class, average citizen, and that's what I am. I'm not too impotent to represent it. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
I think we've all said it. The streets are a big problem here in our town. A lot of the issues that we face, we really have no control over as a council. The last bid we got for our cities was $12 million, and that was ten years ago to fix the roads, and we just don't have that kind of money. And there's no grants out there right now available for that, so there's a lot of things that are coming down the pike from our governor and our state of California, housing regulations that are not going to work very well for Biggs, that we're going to have to figure out a way to work. As far as me personally, like the rest of us on our council, we have a pretty nice city council. We all get along. We all respect each other's point of view. I might not agree with what my council members have to say, but if they are in agreeance, I'm happy to to vote with them just to keep unity on our council and help move the city forward.
Thank you. Our next question is complex, I think. And it will begin with Mr. Buck. How will you protect the groundwater in Biggs? Do you see the current drought as putting Biggs groundwater at risk? And does the above-ground storage eliminate that risk, the pending above-ground storage? And does the above-ground storage eliminate that risk, the pending above-ground storage?
Can you repeat the last part about the above-ground storage?
Yes. Will the above-ground storage eliminate any risk in the drought for the groundwater?
I'm, I'm going to go with, that would probably not, but doing that, what's happened to Lake Blenner over the last 15 years, as often as it's been at drought levels now, and it's a very large reservoir. And there's just not much water in it, whether it's sold or whether it's used for farmers or drinking water, what the uses are. The population has probably exploded to help some of that. As far as protecting the groundwater, personally, I mean, as a local resident, I don't, I would suggest nobody pours any oils or anything harmful at your house, into the soil or anything. Control what's going on in the agro or somebody's local business, if somebody's doing something wrong, but I'm definitely more clean drinking water for everybody. But I would say there's only a limited supply of water in this world and unfortunately, right now, the rest is not seeing it. So I would say no.
Thank you. Ms. Welks?
Okay, the water situation is, is, is huge in, in the state of California. There's spending billions of dollars, I guess, trying to figure out how we can save water and conserve it. So for us in our small town, you know, we will have to look at that, whether it's and coming back on, you know, everyone watering, using water services. And that's not a very great answer, but I think protecting the water from chemicals, that sort of thing, we do have to be mindful of that as citizens. But overall, in general, the water situation, it is a crisis right now. And I think a lot of agencies are looking to see how we can protect that. And so we need to look up and look around and see what we can do as a small community to assist in that. Thank you.
Mr. Knuckles?
Honestly, don't have enough knowledge on how our groundwater system works here. I do know we have several wells that we pull groundwater out of. As far as how we're going to keep those groundwater levels up, pray for rain, that's about all we can really do at this point. So, and as far as that storage tank, I mean, it, it would pacify us for a few days, I think, or a little longer. But other than that, it's, it's not a, it's a, it would be a small Band-Aid on the situation. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
I don't think any of us sitting at the table tonight have any experience or knowledge in our groundwater sustainability here in BIGGS. So I really don't know what, more to say than what hasn't been already answered. You know, we just need to conserve water as best as possible and, and hope that this drought ends soon.
Mr. Shepherd?
So, a couple of things. BIGGS is part of 11 member agency, BUC Advisory Board Sustainable Groundwater. So we are part of that. It's 11 member agency. In, you know, Butte County, it's the Butte Sub Basin, protects the sustainable groundwater. But even in droughts, when the water has gone down, when we've had multiple year droughts, the data shows that the aquifer recharges when it's a rainy year. And that's, you know, there's a lot of data to back that up. And then as far as the above-ground storage tank, I think Chuck tried, it would be a few days. It's more about infrastructure to care for our citizens and get water to them. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more question and then we will go to closing statements. And we'll begin with Ms. Welks. What are the risks for the city of BIGGS of relying on grant funding to maintain the city infrastructure?
Um, the risk with grant funding is not being able to implement it. Do we have the resources or the staffing in order to implement those grants, number one? Because if you get millions of dollars, you have to have the staff in place to disperse it and to report first, second, third, fourth quarter reports. There's a lot that has to be done with grants. So it's very important that strategically, you look at the correct grants that are good for BIGGS, because there may be some for small town. There, there is billions of dollars out there for small towns. And it may not be, some of it may be right for us and some of it may not be right for us. Thank you.
Mr. Knuckles?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What are the risks for the city of BIGGS relying on grant funding to maintain its infrastructure?
Well, the risk is you don't qualify for the grant and you can't afford to do the repairs needed. As far as that goes, you know, we have a team of people paying for these grants and looking for these grants as far as city engineer and stuff like that. So I believe that it's, it's worked so far, but there's always that risk of you don't.
Okay. Mr. Bassett?
Everything we do in this city is based off of grants. We don't have the financial resources to do the major upgrades that we need to have done in this city. So we depend heavily on grants. We have, like Chuck said, we have capable people that are out there getting grants for us. And it goes back to your previous question about the temporary help we have in a city engineer. And those guys have been able to utilize that great grant money and accomplish some really nice stuff here in BIGGS as far as our sewer treatment and, and our sidewalks and just the beautification in town. But it's all done off of grants and it's, that's the only way we get it done around here.
Mr. Shepherd?
So BIGGS doesn't rely, I would have to disagree a little. We don't rely heavily on grants. We apply for grants for safe routes to school, parks, really anything that, you know, infrastructure, state mandates. We get grants for that sometimes, but our most recent sewer water line replacement, half a million dollars, we paid for that are out of our, you know, sewer budget. So we do look for grants to, to offset the costs as much as possible, but some of that stuff, that's why our roads aren't fixed, is some of it, it's, there just isn't resources for it. Grants are no grants. So, thank you.
Mr. Buck?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback off of what Bo and Brian said. It seems that as, you know, we do fund a few things, but we do have, we do also rely on grants. But it seems like with a lot of these grants, unless I'm reading the room wrong, and some of our readings, it's like there's always a caveat. We'll give you the money for it, but it's going to look like this. It's going to be this big and you really don't have much input. It's just, do you want it? And then it might even come with something else, like you need to add some housing or something. It just feels like they'll give you the money, but you're at their mercy of the funding, they're just funding the project. Either the state that you're, you're at the mercy of how would I want to look? How do I want to fit in? And it's not really a city council project per se. You know, it's just to upgrade a park or, you know, or something, but it's going to look a certain way. And that's just one of the things, if I'm reading that correctly, if I'm wrong, somebody please step in. But that's just one of the things I, I don't really care for about the grants. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move into closing statements, let me remind everybody listening or who may listen to this to go to the League of Women Voters, Voters Edge to find detailed information about each of our candidates and about the state proposition or the local measures. It's a absolutely essential website for learning about voting. Closing statements, each candidate gets one minute to give us a summary of why we should vote for you, starting with Mr. Knuckles.
Chuck Knuckles and I said I was appointed to the board, or the council in February of 2021. And I've learned a lot the last 18 months that I've been on the council. And I would very much enjoy to serve another, a full term, a four-year term on the council. I can be useful to this council as far as a working-class community member.
Okay. Ms. Welks?
Thank you. I just want to say that all of my skills in the job that I do now are transferable to be your city council member. Your vote matters. Your opinion matters. And I'm asking for your vote for a city council. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. And I also want to thank all of the community that has joined us tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Buck?
Yeah, like Chuck, I'm an appointed council member only, or appointed council member also, if I'm the right word there. I've been here about six months. I would definitely like to do a full term. I think being recently retired will give me a chance to look into issues more, be more involved in the city council of this community. Grandkids are all in school here. They're not even at the high school level yet, so we're not going anywhere. And I just want to help this town make good decisions with good information. And I'm sure anybody on the board or about council, if it's running for council, obviously has the same ambitions. And I'm sure we all work together. I'd like to thank you guys for having us tonight.
Mr. Shepherd?
Well, thank you. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for also putting this on. This is my fourth time doing it. And I think it is crucial. So I appreciate your time and effort. And first of all, I, I think what I bring to the table and why I would ask for everyone's vote is, you know, my history on the council. I'm NCPA commissioner, so I'm heavily involved in the utility part of our city. I spend a lot of extra time around the community, as do the others. And so you can also look at more of my issues on my Facebook page, Mayor Bo Shepherd. And I would just ask for your vote one more time. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett?
When I ran for city council four years ago, it was solely just to be a part of this community and get out of the, get involved in community events. Like I said before, and like most of us on this council, we grew up in the city, in this little town. I have seen a, a change in the direction of the cha, of the town. If I get elected for another four years, my, my, one of my main goals is to try and bring pride back into our community. Pride in the appearance of our town, try to bring back some goodwill, good feelings between the community members. Seems like there's a lot of infighting on our social network pages. There's just a lot of things, non-governmental, non-infrastructure, that need to be changed in this town. And that's my focus as your city council member for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And from the League of Women Voters, thanks to each of you for participating. And thank you for being willing to take on the task of governing. Good night.